I'd like to call this regular meeting in the German Township trustees to order. Could we all rise? I'd like to take a moment of silence to, in honor of the victims of knife.
Thank you. Now for the pledge allegiance.
Mr. Heeson, could we have a roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross here.
Mr. Stubbs here.
Mr. Potter here.
All are present.
We have any visible comments?
Mark, get anything?
Gen meeting next Wednesday.
If no other visiting comments, we'll have the fiscal officers report. That meeting is this Wednesday or a week from now?
A week from now.
That would be the twentieth.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, good evening again, everyone. First of all, I've given you the minutes from the August fourteenth regular meeting, as well as the August twenty eighth special meeting. Are there any corrections?
The only thing on the August fourteenth meeting, page five should read, "A six-month moratorium was enacted by the trustees on six twenty-nine, twenty-three." It says seven-ten.
Yes, it's wrong.
So, exactly. Everything else is fine.
I had one under the, on page two. I lost my, oh, under the celebration of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, I spoke with Tim Rudd, not Superintendent Schaller.
Oh, I know it's had that you had said Schaller.
So, Board President Rudd is who I, I had emailed.
Well, I'm going to report to you that I reached out to Schaller.
Oh, was he confused? He hadn't, didn't answer.
Oh, okay.
All right, that's all I had.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the eight fourteen, twenty-three regular meeting and the eight twenty-eight, twenty-three special meeting with, with the corrections.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've also given you the August financial reports. As usual, you have the fund status report at the end of August, the year-to-date through August thirty-first of the cash summary by fund, and then the month of August cash summary by fund, the August receipts list, and the August payment list. And I did want to point out three different transactions. We see number one thirty-six for nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars from Star Ohio is our August interest payment. It is now up to five-point-four-eight percent. It's going up every month. Payment number six thirty-five for thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars to Hauser Asphalt and Concrete is for the resurfacing of the Township Hall parking lot. And receipt number six thirty-six for one hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents to Ray Hensley Incorporated is for the chip seal of projects on Germantown Liberty Road, Weaver Road, EB Road, Friend Road, Boomer Schein Road, and Harris Road. Are there any questions about the financials? If not, can I get a motion to approve the August financial reports and authorize the payment of August bills?
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the August financial reports and authorize the payments of August bills, warrants five oh six nine four, your five oh six nine eight, and vouchers five ninety-four through seven twenty-five for payroll direct deposit, tax withholding, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have now received the ballot language for the November election for the road levy renewal, and it will read as follows. "A renewal of a tax for the benefit of Germantown Township Incorporated and unincorporated for the purpose of general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges that the county auditor estimates will collect one-hundred-ninety-seven thousand dollars annually at a rate not exceeding one mil for each one dollar of taxable value, which amounts to twenty-seven dollars for each one-hundred-thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value for five years commencing in 2024, first due in calendar year 2025." At last month's meeting, you asked me to determine if the August, the October eighteenth informational meeting here at the Township Hall, which would be concerning the electric and gas aggregation issues that are going to be on the November ballot, you wanted to know if that was going to be an official trustee meeting. I did reach out to Joe Garrett at Triville, and he has confirmed that the meeting will not be a trustee meeting. I do believe that all three of you can be present because it'll be informational only, so it would not be considered a meeting, in fact, if you just sat here and listened to the presentation.
Do we have a time on that?
I believe it's at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Let me just check my calendar.
I can be here for sure. I don't know if you guys can't make it.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday. I, I will not be here for that.
It is.
It's a Wednesday.
It is a Wednesday, yes. And it will be at... Oh, it's actually at six o'clock.
So I guess the other question, has anybody received a letter from Triville?
Explaining anything about electric aggregation.
So I thought, I thought that letters were supposed to go out.
I had not.
Maybe this.
I was told they were going to go out in August.
Yeah, he said.
I won't be getting one since.
I have a question about the ballot. Sure. Is that, let me then add new appraised value or the old appraised?
The old.
The old.
The newer appraised values will take effect January of twenty-four, so anything that would go on next year's ballot would use the new appraisal rates, numbers.
I'll just, just check. That's what I thought. I was just making sure.
Okay, moving on. Every year, you approve this resolution. It is a requirement of the county board of, county auditor, and it is a resolution to accept the amounts and rates for tax year twenty-four. And I sent that to you, and as part of what I sent you, you also saw the estimated receipts that will come from each of the tax levies next year, and flow as the inside knowledge. If someone would like to introduce resolution.
Twenty twenty-three dash forty.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution? If not, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three forty is adopted. Back in August, the United States Department of the Treasury released additional eligible uses for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, otherwise known as ARCA. And there were three new uses. One is to provide emergency relief of natural disasters. Two, to invest in community development Title I projects in line with the Community Development Block Grant Program. And three, to invest in surface transportation infrastructure. I believe that only the third use for surface transportation infrastructure would apply to the township. And if you think you might want to consider a project under this new eligible use, Mr. Holbrook and I can dig deeper into the requirements and any restrictions. I have not. I've just done a cursory review at this point. And finally, as a reminder, we must obligate the remaining ARCA funds by the end of December of twenty-four next year and expend those funds by the end of December twenty-six, except for this new category of surface transportation infrastructure. Those projects must be completed by September of twenty-twenty-six. And if we don't use the funds or, or appropriate them by the, by the date, they are subject to clawback by the Treasury Department.
So any thoughts? What's the balance of that?
About seventy thousand. We spent thirty-three. So seventy-five approximately. Because I have now transferred the money that we originally paid out of the general fund for the parking lot resurfacing, and it's now been transferred to the ARCA. So is there any thoughts? Do you want to consider a project under this new category? Or should we just plan to do what we would have done without that?
I have something later in the meeting that might.
Okay, well, let's come back to it later. So, Mr. Stubbs, last month, you, I thought you had asked me to reach out to my lawyer and to the superintendent. So I did reach out to both of them. I'm going to have to now reach out to Tim Rudd.
Okay.
Concerning the potential for a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration of the United States in twenty-twenty-six. But I also reached out or responded to a request from Farmersville Mayor Nick Lamb for additional information, which I have provided to him. Okay. On September eighth, we received three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Montgomery County Auditor, and that represents the settlement payment for the July tax receipts. We've not yet received the second half homestead and rollback taxes from the state. And once I have received those, I will then do my normal remittance to the City of Germantown of ninety percent of the joint levy receipts. That's coming down the pipe at some point, probably towards the end of September or...
Is that comparable to the last? Amount of money?
I don't think there's much difference, although I haven't looked in detail at it. They typically are about the same every, every year. I'm going to skip item ten. I believe this is close. We'll talk about that during our report. So we'll go on to the next one. And that is, I attended the Montgomery County Township Association meeting on August twenty-fourth. The speaker was Auditor Carl Keith. He provided a summary version of his July presentation on the property value revalue, property revaluation process. At the meeting, there was also a change to the MCTA bylaws, which was approved, and that change will make the treasurer's term two years instead of one, which will be in conformity with the other officer. And just a reminder, if you plan to go, the next MCTA meeting will be the Holiday Gala. It'll be on November sixteenth at the Mandalay Banquet Center in the evening. I believe that's a Thursday, if I remember correctly. County Auditor Paul Gruner was also at the MCTA meeting. So I cornered him after the meeting and asked him about the Creek Road Hill out at the dam, and whether anything could be done this year. And he's told me, no, not this year, but next year the road is scheduled to be resurfaced. So hopefully not be.
I mean, holding to it.
I hope so.
Did you get that in writing?
Yeah. No, I got a phone call back. So, but I was surprised how responsive he was to me. He called me back the next day with the answer. Dr. Cross and I attended another meeting with the city last week to discuss the proposed new fire EMS levy next year. And the group recommends that the levy be continuous and using the higher revaluation property values in twenty-twenty-four. Randy Stever has estimated that the levy will be three-point-three mils. We also reached out to the county auditor's office, who's contacting the state for an answer, and that is whether we can run the levy in March and still use the higher revaluation numbers, or whether we'd be using the twenty-twenty-three valuations. And the reason why it is a question is because we have to start the process this year to get the certification from the county auditor as to what the levy would generate. So assuming that the answer is no, that we'll then wait and probably talk about running it next November and not in March.
Just to clarify, there's, there's two, two, two no levies that are continuous to go into the fire EMS. This would be a new levy. So it would be an eight.
Not a replacement.
Not a replacement, a new building, new. So that's why it's going to be.
Mr. Stubbs has asked me to provide some training assistance to the cemetery fiscal officer. She and I are scheduled to meet tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll see where it goes after that. I'm, right now, we have two, two hours set aside. I don't know whether that'll be enough.
Okay.
Or not.
Okay. Thank you.
And finally, a reminder that our next trustee meeting will actually be on Tuesday, October tenth, because Monday is the Columbus Day holiday. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Heeson. Police Department, we're on you.
The school resource officer on August twenty-ninth signed the SRO MOU with the superintendent. First payment was received on September seventh, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. National Night Out is October third, from six to eight. It's a Tuesday. We will have K-9 demos. We're hoping to have Hamilton. Sean Figgly, Sean Figgly was an officer here, and he went to Hamilton, became a K-9. He's also hopefully going to be here. He's helped out in the past, so we'll have two K-9s running. Other than that, I'd like to recommend to the board trustees to hire Reserve Police Officer Ben Parker to a position of full-time police officer effective August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, at the step rate of three, with benefits and subject to a six-month probationary period.
Happy September.
Did I say? Yes, it should be. September seventeen.
We need to do that by resolution. We would make that twenty-twenty-three dash forty-one.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-one. A resolution to hire Reserve Police Officer Ben Parker to the position of full-time police officer effective September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, at step three with benefits and subject to a six-month probationary period.
Any discussion of the resolution twenty twenty-three forty-one?
Is he being hired to take over Marzen's?
Yeah, Marzen's road, road patrol.
So well, once the school, school year ends for Officer Marzen.
He's, no, he, he stayed. They both stayed. Officer Marzen goes back to the road and works as a secondary car or two cars.
Officer Parker will still be?
Yes, he will still be employed.
Any further discussion? Non, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-one is adopted.
And that concludes my report.
Road Department report. Two, next couple things to report on this evening. First one is, reached out to a woman by the name of Kayla Yacini with Enterprise about switching our spectrum contract to ODOT's state contract. And her and I worked together on getting that done, and it will be reducing our current internet charges from two ninety-nine ninety-five or ninety-nine dollars, ninety-five cents per month to one hundred and forty-nine dollars, ninety-five cents for the exact same service and speeds uploading. So hopefully that will take effect here in the next month or two. Since it goes through the state, they have to approve it, and there's no problems. The state has already started the ball rolling, but I told Mr. Heeson that it might be a month or two to see those savings.
I appreciate you doing that, particularly because it only benefits the general fund because the general one takes the whole internet charge.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Yeah, I kind of stumbled across it. You know, she had reached out to me earlier in the year, and then after looking at some of their offerings through the ODOT, the State of Ohio procurement website, that was one of, you know, internet was one of the things that was offered under, evidently bid contract. Ended up saving this. The other thing I had on my report this evening is Swap for G. Which, if you didn't know, is our Southwest Ohio Purchasers per Government. That is the consortium that we belong to along Montgomery County and to the other townships and cities area to purchase salt for the icing. They usually bid that out in a two-year cycle, and every two years we have to basically work a contract to the lowest bidder. Bid on portion of rock salt in the entire contract. In twenty-two, twenty-three, was the last cycle. American Rock Salt was the low bid at ninety-one dollars and five cents a ton. Swap for G has, has reached out to us, to everybody that just pays and has recommended that we go with the same supplier for the twenty-twenty-three season. So basically what it is, is it's adding another year onto the contract. The suppliers have agreed to honor that price that was for last year's rock salt. So I would do my recommendation, recommendation to the board to go ahead and accept Northern Rock Salt was our rock salt supplier for the icing salt at a price of ninety-one dollars and five cents a ton for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four period of time. That price will be good through July thirty-first of twenty-four. And then I would assume that Swap for G will, in the meantime, come to, come back and rebid that. I think it costs us, how much is it, Mr. Heeson, like a fifty-dollar annual fee to join Swap for G?
I'm not sure. I don't even remember ever paying them. I guess I have.
We're going to full bend right now, so hopefully, depending on how the snow falls, you know, we might or might not have to dip into it until next year, so.
We'll approve that contract using resolution twenty twenty-three forty-two.
All right, I'd like to approve the con, approve the motion for the contract of American Salt at the price of ninety-one oh five a ton twenty-three, twenty-four.
Any discussion of resolution twenty twenty-three forty-two? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-two is adopted.
And the only other thing I had that wasn't on my report is a question for Mr. Heeson. Did you ever get any signed paperwork back from Hauser or using the ARCA funds to pay the bond?
No.
And we'll reach out to them again.
Lord, you're right. I think I have in my files. Similar signature last year for the.
Barrett.
People wrote. You may have it in your files, but I don't think I have it in mine. Yeah, we'll get ding if we don't have that. Show the auditors next year.
I'll reach out to both Barrett and Hauser to see if I can get. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jeremy, again. Thanks for the internet. I'll save it. Zoning Department report.
I don't have much for a zoning report. August was a little quieter, which I appreciate. We've been busy in other offices. One permit written, that was for a garage on Dry Run Circle. As far as the trash department, we've been busy. I've been in the middle of the process of getting online trash payment set up with Iwork. I have a tutorial scheduled tomorrow. They're going to take me through the whole setup and process, so I can better explain to any residents or anybody that has an issue. I'm going to see about getting a link on our website for people to log in, and then I'm going to get with Iwork Billing Department to win it on the bill and get the fee changed from the fifty-seventy-nine to the increase of sixty dollars. There is a three-and-a-half percent fee for each transaction that will be paid by the person doing the transaction, for the residents. But it really doesn't amount to much on a sixty-dollar bill. So that's, we're, we're doing good. There should, there should be no, no issue for that would not be ready to go by next billing cycle. Trash assessments are complete. Hallelujah. As introduced in the list, that will be going to Montgomery County. I'm going to ask you guys to pass a resolution to be able to send that to Montgomery County. When I sent out all the letters, we were set to get thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. After people paid, we should still be getting twenty-four thousand, sixty-two dollars and nine-onesent. And that is not including the, there's a, a higher amount that will go because the Montgomery County fees, but after our fees, what we should be getting is twenty-four thousand.
Oh, is the twenty-five, two sixty-six oh six what you're going to certify?
That is the full amount after township fees and Montgomery County auditor fees.
So that's, that's the number that we will put in the resolution. Make that resolution twenty twenty-three forty-three, and I've given you the resolution in what I sent you. Yeah, it just logged me in. Because I had my. Is anybody, I can ask about if someone needs to use it.
All right, I've got it. I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three. A resol, resolution to authorize the assessment of property owners who are delinquent to waste disposal service charges pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section five oh five point three-three. Can you read the whole thing?
I don't know whether you need to read it all. I mean, you want to put in the amount twenty-five thousand. Two sixty-six point oh six.
For the amount of twenty-five thousand, what was it? Two sixty-six. Point oh six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of the resolution?
So how many people are actually delinquent? Number one.
Um, I would, I would have to count. I've got my spreadsheet here. I, I think I sent out a hundred and sixty-some letters. I, I mean, I got quite a few back. I'll say that, but.
I got the mail one day, and there was fifty that came back at five dollars. Got the mail one day and there was fifty that came back at five dollars.
Those are the ones that people didn't even pick up. Yeah, it's, it's part of the way.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Dr. Frost.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty three forty three is adopted.
Thanks for that, Shawna. Very hard work. Trustee reports, Mr. Potter.
All righty. On our park, on the park. Apartment, they are, they are looking at AEDs, the defibrillators. To be recommended for at three different locations in the parks. One at the concession stand at Percher, one at the bathrooms at Weber, and one at the shelter at the Veterans Park. They're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. So you know, our. Our money come up for special projects.
Of course. Every project's a special project.
I asked them about the city's ARPA money. And they said it was earmarked for something else. But anyways, so that's still being discussed, but we are looking at if found somebody to, that they could rent them from. And it, and, and they will take care of maintaining them. If it gets stolen or broke or whatever, it's all in the rental. So that way it could be budgeted for, and that's a better way to, to approach this. Plans for the new tennis courts are moving forward. Art Board has asked. If the township is at all interested in doing their Christmas celebration jointly with the city. Or if you want to keep doing it township and city. So just something to come up. Kind of. Like township thing ourselves.
You know.
Yeah, we don't.
We'll do.
Anything to with the.
Well, that's.
We do the Santa pancake, pancake dinner here. It's not really.
Well, we did with the Santa Claus or something.
That was the police department always.
Okay, so that's just the police department on.
Well.
But I know, I'm just saying.
So, but I didn't matter. But the.
So I'm just bringing it up.
But the Christmas parade and.
That's a park sport issue, which is already with the township.
Yeah, I think they wanted to know if we wanted to do the township. Call it something with the township instead of just down at the city. So I, I kind of implied we just do our own thing and they could do their own stuff. I just brought it up.
So the, the tennis courts, you're talking about the pickleball courts?
No, the tennis, the tennis courts. So they're, they're adding. Six more new tennis courts is in the works of, they're getting the plans together. For all that, the pickleball courts is, is an additional thing and that would be over at Weber. They're out of room on the church park section.
Funding wise for all that.
They're got all private stuff.
So they're trying to. Private funding for all that.
I said.
Yes, sir.
As far as doing a joint thing with the city. You know, the police department's always done breakfast with Santa, pancakes with Santa. My problem with doing a joint thing with them is we lose our identity.
That's what I said. That's exactly right.
We already get it confused enough with Germantown, German Township being so close. And pronunciation and.
I agree a hundred percent. I just.
So I personally would be against that.
Me too.
I like, I like what we did.
I like what we do also. I just bringing it up so that everybody was aware and I wasn't keeping nothing.
I wonder if they shouldn't go ahead and add our name on it anyway, since the, the parks is funded by township residents. So it should be the Germantown, German Township Christmas Gala anyways.
Exactly so.
Yep. I'll bring that up.
It is a joint parks board. It's a joint parks levy. And it should be the German, German, German town, German township. Santa Parade and. Whatever else you call it.
Okay. Yep, makes sense. Uh, one other thing, there's eighteen acres of farmland down at the Weber Park. That they ran out. And that's been. It hasn't been put up for bid for several years. So I suggested that they need to put that back up for bid this year, because it's been several years. So. They are going to just get some quotes from four or five of the local farmers here and go from there on that.
So who?
Ronnie Boyer. And he does a good job.
I'm just.
I'm sorry.
I'm ship resident.
I'm ship resident.
I'm just, are we getting paid now, catch right?
Hundred and seventy dollars an acre.
Same kind of low.
Did kind of look.
But it is a small font.
It is. So let's put it out there. See what it. So MMI. I hauled a load of topsoil up there and Ben Amburgi and the city guys placed it around the base for the flagpole and seeded it the last week. We laid out where the buildings was so that we could get the parking lot laid out. Working on the plans on how to get that in place yet this year. The pool. Board, the pool is closed, it was closed as of Labor Day. It had a very good year. In twenty twenty one, it had a little over a hundred thousand dollars shut pool sales. In twenty twenty two, they had a hundred and eleven thousand and twenty twenty three, they had a hundred and thirty thousand. So they have some projects to do. Had about, they estimated about forty thousand dollars with the projects. They didn't know if they was going to get them all. Able to do them all, but looks like they'll be able to do them all this year. And there's one more year on the umpouse. So that, that will help that, that's sixty thousand dollars a year.
I think computerizing the emission cards made a big difference too.
It made a big difference.
Job.
So here, I, I, we talked last month about the roof. Here is, I got one quote so far. I've got other calls out, but they're not being very responsive to me. So this is a quote from Spartan Roofing here, local. As you can see there, it'd be all the tear off of the two layers. All of the, everything to be done. It's a total of forty eight thousand one hundred and three dollars. There's a ten year warranty on labor, on quality labor. It would, he would do a yearly inspection of that. And the product is a good year product and it's guaranteed for twenty years. So. We talked before about using the ARPA money for that. So. I asked him, I told him we could get nothing till at least the next meeting. And if that would still leave time to get it done yet this year, and said it would. So this is just. Something to think about or.
Do we need two quotes?
Doing. And.
It's considered a micro purchase.
I think we should have two quotes. Yes.
So who did, who else did you reach out to?
Um, I, I've reached out to two guys and. But it, it will have plenty of time.
Okay.
So if, if we wanted to, we have this quote. If we wanted to set aside the money, we need to do or get the language together or whatever we need to do. And then if the quote comes in under this, then we'll just be a decision of not exceed the forty eight thousand.
I think the easy thing is when you, when we know who we're going to use, then do the resolution.
Okay.
To appropriate the fund.
Do, do we want to put, do we want to put in the quote that it has to be done this year? I mean, how bad, how bad the roof is?
Probably looks pretty bad, but. One thing that I would recommend. When talking to the people we're getting quotes from is the enlarged scupper drain. Proper drain, and I'm sure that's a proper term. It's the, basically a hole in the side of the parapet wall where the water drains off. On these three roofs, the water just drains right off the back end of the gutter. But there is no, it's all parapet wall on all four sides on like Shawna's office, chief's office. And that's what happens is that scupper drain gets covered with leaves and it's only. That whole area drains through a hole this big and as you can imagine, twig gets on it and it's plump. So if there's some way they can enlarge that to like a six or even an eight inch drain, that would help out. That's. So. That would be the only recommendation I would have.
Do you think it's like a three inch drain though?
Yeah, right now it's, well, it, it was probably a four inch downspout. But by the time they put the ice board on it, they wrapped the rubber down and it, the holes now getting smaller and smaller. It might be two and a half inches, three inches maybe. So if there'd be any way, even if it costs extra money to enlarge that. Definitely think that would alleviate a lot of.
Let me make sure I understand. Is this quote just for the police department? Those were all the roofs?
It's a whole building, whole building.
Okay.
I would try to, you know, because when they buy the ice award, it's pre pitched. Pitch that thing as much as you can. I don't know if you can buy different. It's just on that pre fabricated dice support that I. I would try to pitch it as much as possible. Yeah. Sixteen inches of parapet wall, slope on it, like this.
Absolutely. Well, I think that concludes my report.
I'm gonna go next once you.
Yeah, sure.
So my report, I attended the nine, five, twenty three Germantown Council meeting. Nothing significant to report. So nine, seven, twenty three, I met with county commissioner Judy Dodge and assistant Montgomery County administrator Chris Williams. I request would the Montgomery County Commissioners just designate all of the unincorporated portion of German Township. As a restricted area prohibiting economically significant wind farms, large wind farms and large solar facilities. Basically, their answer was at this time, the commissioners do not want to designate any restricted areas. Really didn't. Know the reason they did not want to, but it doesn't seem like they want to, they want to restrict it. They recommend that the Germantown, the Germantown should put regulations in place for small scale solar facilities, then reapproach the commissioners concerning restrictions on large scale. So the good news is a large scale would, if it was, if a company didn't come in and wanted to do that, they probably would be unsuccessful because of the public back. And the zoning commission is working on the small scale. That's really, I think, the biggest concern. The small scale may sound, small scale is not so small. It goes up to fifty megawatts. So theoretically, usually the, with the setbacks from the adjacent properties and the right of ways, usually about ten acres per, per megawatt. So. A fifty, a forty nine point nine megawatt could be almost five hundred acres, which is not a small, small, you know, facility. So the goal, I say, I, I, I wasn't terribly disappointed. They said, no, I, I, I don't know whether it comes down to that. They're, they're. Afraid they don't want to, you know, they're, they want to make money off this or they just don't want to. Get involved in it at this time, because none of the other townships have approached. I was the first one to approach that. So. Unless, and they looked at the map and said, yeah, it's rural, but we really don't want to do anything. So, okay, so.
The township can restrict smalls without.
Township can, exactly. So the large, it's two separate, two separate bills. The large, large scale of facilities are, are. Are controlled, I should say, by, by the county commissioners. The small scale are controlled by the townships. That just passed. Back in, in April, that, that law. So, so that, that, that's, I think, where we really, we want to keep those type of facilities out. That's what we. And that's why the zoning commission is trying to come up with some pretty strong regulations. So.
Mr. Potter, we know this. Just kind of seated your pants. Yes. How many five hundred of state or lots are there? I mean, my, my neighbors over in my township, I know they own a hundred and sixty here.
There, there's very few. I mean, they would have to get multiple farmers. To sell. That's, that's a group.
So wait, the, the zoning commission is working on those resolutions. Whether they can finish those, our, our moratorium ends on December twenty nine. So I don't know whether they can finish those or not. After they have a meeting on October fourth. So after that meeting gets, I think, a better idea of what they can do, try to finish this year. I, and then at that time, if they get the impression they won't be able to, to put the regulations in place by the time the moratorium is over. Then I'll approach our legal counsel, say, can we legally extend that six months? So that will get them the time to put this. Again, you know, any changes to the zoning resolution, the rules have to go before the, the zoning commission has to have a public meeting. When that has to be advertised ten days in advance. Then if they pass it, then it has to go to trustees and that has to be a public meeting and that has to be advertised ten, ten days in advance. When you think of all those time periods, not sure whether we can get somebody, have anything added. So if you have any questions about that, please see the afterwards. So, so that's all I have.
Hey. On the mind?
Yes.
All right. I just, I think you're good. Cemetery, a couple of things. First of all, Keith is doing a great job. I think I've said that a couple of times, but he, he's bringing new ideas and. Just, he, he's looking at things from a different perspective, which is, which is nice. He's created a Facebook page for the cemetery. So if you're on Facebook, you can follow the Germantown Union Cemetery. He's also working to link us with Find a Grave. He's got our Google. The Google Cemetery now has the right phone number. And the right address, had the wrong address on there. So he's been working to get all this digital stuff so people can find us and then he's able to see how many people. Have clicked on Google, which is actually quite a few, looking for directions to the cemetery. Most of it was May, so we assume Memorial Day. But there's a lot of clicks and a lot of people are clicking the directions link. It tells them that too, to get to the cemetery, which is interesting. I'd like to thank Jeremy for working with Keith on getting his GovDeals account set up. He's, he got it set up. He had, they came and did a tutorial with them and. The mower should be up here before too long on GovDeals. So thank you for that. I think it's gonna be easier because he can just do what he wants to do. Yep. Yeah, GovDeal sent somebody out, which he was impressed with, that went through the whole thing. Yeah. So that's all, that's all worked through. There's a twelve and a half percent buyer's premium that automatically is going to be passed on to the buyer and, and it won't affect whatever we sell.
Seller price to be, make sure they get the automatic increase.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The bidding gets really close to the end.
Yep.
And automatically lengthens the time of the auction. So the. It gets about.
Other, yeah, which is perfect. So. Couple other things from the cemetery. Our, our, our renter from the house has moved out, so we're gonna fix a few things up. And we're gonna have it available here before too long. So if anybody is looking for a nice house with an interesting backyard, let me know. The quiet neighbors.
Do you know what the rent is?
We're looking at it. It's gonna go up from where we've had it because I think we're a little low. So we're so, we're gonna discuss that next month. We're gonna look into getting it at a fair market price, which we think it's a little, a little low right now. So the seventy two inch Ferris is gonna go on GovDeals as soon as possible. And we, we were talking tonight, we've got a quote and I don't have it with me. To replace two of our forty eight inch Ferris mowers of somewhere around just over thirteen thousand total for the two mowers. So we're gonna look into possibly replacing two mowers for the spring. What we have to, we need to, there, the other two have. Somewhere around eighteen hundred hours on them, which is. A lot on those mowers on those hills. So. Again, those will probably go on. If we can work with what we're doing, we're going to replace the mowers by spring and then put those mowers on GovDeals as well. Mowers specifically they're looking at, it's a forty eight inch from Ferris and they are on back order. So. If we do go ahead and do this, we're gonna, oh, hold on, we gotta hold on to our mowers to make sure we get delivery. That's before we.
You're, you're selling a sixty inch and buying two forty eights?
No, we're gonna sell a seventy two.
Well.
Now.
So, okay, excellent. And they're gonna sell the other two forty eights.
And then we're.
Another seventy two?
No. We had bought a, it's bigger than a forty-eight. I want to say a fifty-two. To. Replace the seventy-two. So we've already got it. So the, this is the Cat Diesel. Seventy-two inch nice mower, but it's just a little too big for what we need down there. So we're gonna put it, put it up on GovDeals. Hopefully get a good price out of it and offset our cost for the new ones. We're also looking into, uh, getting a UTV potentially for the, for the cemetery, which. Is a gator. The, the brand he's looked at right now is Kubota. Um, he's gotten a quote. It was, it was around twenty thousand. Uh, the reason we're looking at this. Ju- just recently, just this week, they had something all the way in the top left of the top left back of the cemetery. They had to take the truck, which was half full of. Gravel, go down and pick some other stuff up and bring it back up there. So, uh, there's. It's gonna eliminate time running back and forth and just be all around helpful, um, is, is our plan to. To make things more efficient and better use of time down there. So nothing set in stone on that. We're just starting the process. Prices are. But that's where we're at on that. We've set ourselves up with a marathon credit card. Now that it's marathon down here is gonna set us up with tax exempt. Um, you know, some cost savings as well. They asked me to check with you, chief. They, our insurance company has asked that we do a driver's check. For all the employees that. Drive the truck on the road. Is that something we can do with the, just the?
Talking about the.
Mark, do you do that?
I was gonna say, I, I do it every year.
Oh, you do it?
I had to do it for our insurance purposes. I.
Okay.
Do you want the forms or do you actually want me to do it?
Um, I'm not sure. Let me get with them. But you're the one that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a form I have in the office. You just fill one out for each employee.
Okay.
And then the, I think it's five dollars.
Okay. As a minor cost, I think it's five dollars.
Yeah.
Well, that's not a big deal, but our, it, it's something we can do. So then we'll create a policy at the next meeting.
And if you want, I can email you that.
Perfect, if you don't mind. Uh, it's budget time, which means, uh, just be cautious with what the, uh, the city's gonna throw at you with the, uh, with the, uh, joint levies. Uh, it's the time where they start charging this administration fees. And I assume since the pool did better, their fees are gonna go up. So. Would be my guess.
Well. We did last year is got them logging their hours. Or, but they, they, but a big hike on us last year.
Yeah.
Eighty percent for Ben and. Oh, twenty percent for this, that and the other. And I insisted that they log their hours.
Yeah.
So.
Well, my, my thing is just make sure, because I'm not on a, I'm not on a one that has a budget anymore. But they like to, uh, add those administrative fees. I think we added it up to somewhere near eighty, ninety thousand dollars if you take them all together. So. It adds up pretty quick with the. Was it twenty-five or thirty-five from fire and EMS each and. Five from the cemetery or more, or five from the pool or more and fifteen from the. Senior center. It adds up. So. Um, just make sure the money that the taxpayers are paying goes to the right spot. That's is all. And not to pay the administration salaries of Germantown. Uh, I'd like to thank Chief Anzik for his officer accolades he posted on Facebook. I think, uh, it was well received. And I think it's nice that the community can see what our officers are doing throughout the month. So I look forward to seeing them as we go forward. Uh, and that concludes my report. I would like to ask for an executive session at the end to discuss personnel.
Okay, thanks.
Um, are you making a mo- a motion to do that?
Uh, and I'm just waiting to see if there's anything else we need to discuss before we go into it.
It's another old business. New business. Okay, yeah, no, I, I move to go into executive session per O R C one, two, one point two, two, G one. Consider the employment of a public employee. Kind of a second.
Second.
Mr. Easton, can I have a roll call?
Sure. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Kid is now, is now seven fifty-four. So I'd like to move into executive session with three trustees and Mr. Easton.
Yeah.
Okay. I moved to return to our open session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Easton, may I have?
All in favor?
Oh. Hi, any powers?
We're back in open session at eight fifteen.
Since there's no further business, old or new, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We're adjourned at eight.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a wonderful evening.